Okay, good evening, and I'll call to order the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be our public, uh, I'm sorry, will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that, I'm gonna have our sheriff Wilkie to come forward for our invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one and all, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
As the sheriff comes forward for the invocation, I just wanted to make a comment that yesterday was the four-year mark of Hurricane Tropical Storm Fred, and so today we pause to remember the tragic anniversary of Tropical Storm Fred, which brought devastating flooding to Haywood County on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and claimed six lives. The storm left deep scars in our community, destroying homes, damaging roads and bridges, and forever changing families in places like Crusoe. Yet, in the midst of loss, neighbors, first responders, and countless volunteers came together with courage and compassion to rebuild communities and lives. We reflect on this day. We honor those we lost and support those still rebuilding, and continue and commit to carrying forward the lessons learned to keep our communities safe and strong.
Galatians, chapter six, verse nine, says, "And let us not grow weary of doing good, for in due season we will reap, if we do not give up. So then, as we have opportunity, let us do good to everyone, and especially to those who are of the household of faith." You remark, Mr. Chairman, four years ago, a tragic day in this county, and I'm pleased to know that we haven't given up, and that we hold to our faith, and we hold to a community that comes together in times of difficulty and challenge. I'm proud to be a sheriff in such a county. I'm proud to stand among you, and my prayer today will center on us maintaining that energy and that faith going forward, and that we do not grow weary of doing good for this community. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather in peace and do the people's business, and I would pray that you would grant us wisdom and discernment, most of all, on this day, strength, as we've come through the last several years of challenge, things that have affected this county in ways that not many communities have experienced in such a short period of time. Give us strength, give us rest, and give us peace for the times when we need that strength, and it's in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. I will say, the day after that storm, as I rode around the county, random, and, uh, and the, and the day after I rode around the county after Helene, I, every, I think every piece of equipment that anybody had, earth-moving equipment, backhoes, dozers, whatever, was, was working. I mean, it's, it's amazing that there's that many pieces of equipment in the county, but I think they were all running that day. So it was very heartwarming to see people just, they just showed up and did what needed to be done. Okay, we're gonna move to the public comment session, because we don't have a public hearing. I did, I did wanna make a comment. There is an agenda item on the regular agenda regarding the lease of county property to Mountain Projects. This item was noticed in the legal section of the mountaineer on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and has been posted on the county website as well. Per our county attorney, no public hearing is required on this item, so any members of the public wishing to speak on that matter should come forward now. Is anybody wanting to speak on that? I don't see anyone. Okay, now we'll move on to people who have signed up to speak for public comment. And the person that signed up to speak is, is it Joy Hearn? I've lost, I've lost your card, sorry. But if you would, just keep your comments to three minutes, and Amy or Haven will let you know when your time's up. But thank you for coming out tonight.
Okay, thanks. Tell me when it's go time. Okay. First of all, I wanna thank Commissioner Long, Commissioner Ramey, and Commissioner Ensley for, uh, my name is Joy Hearn, I live at, sorry, live at forty-two Fireside Drive in Maggie Valley. I've been coming here for several years now, particularly on sound, and three of you guys have all, all responded to me. We've had different, had separate meetings. And, Mr. Ensley, it was about the data, data center, I think, that you got back to me in a, in a timely fashion. I have brought in a letter that I sent to a gentleman by the name of Chris Lloyd, who, uh, when I was in the meeting with Mr. Ramey, challenged me on where my data came from. I taught music for six years, and, uh, the sound has impacted my hearing a little bit, hopefully not too much, but it's a big thing now, with sound pollution and noise and level. And, uh, the, he asked me where the decibel level came from. It came from, I found it a few months later. The letter, let's see, we had a meeting January, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I sent him the letter on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, told him where the information came from. It was from a World Health Organization study that in order for you to have peace and quiet, be able to sleep in your own home, the decibel level cannot be over fifty decibels at your property line with the windows closed. So that's where that came from. I have yet to receive an acknowledgement from him. I thought that was a little strange, so I don't even know if he received the information, really. That was my first question. I just wanted to know if he got the information. And the second question was, um, this is not just about the Smoky Mountain Event Center, it's about a county-wide problem, because it affects different people at different times. Mr. Ensley mentioned gunshots. If you're near a gunshot, that's about ninety decibels, and that's why police wear ear protection. The second question I had was, what, what, if any progress has been made on setting a decibel level to kind of tweak the county ordinance? So there is a level. Otherwise, from a court situation, part of my background is, um, uh, I've been, was an assessor for fourteen years, and then I was a special magistrate for sixteen years, is you have to have sufficient evidence, and evidence would be a decibel level, which, which you all don't have. When you don't have a decibel level, it can go to the moon, and it cannot, in my opinion, cannot be enforced. And my last understanding was, it was gonna be referred to the lawyer, to the county lawyer, for his input. So that, those are my two questions. I just wanted an acknowledgement, and the second one was, what's, what's the status? Okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Hearn's the only one that signed up to speak your public comment. I'll move on to constituent concerns. I just have, I wanna note that the next commissioners' meeting will be Tuesday, September second, as the county offices will be closed on Monday, September first, in observance of Labor Day. Um, I do know, just on the sound, I will say that I know the Fairgrounds has purchased a very expensive uh, decibel meter. They tell you fifteen, it's not the ones that you download on your phones, it's very accurate. And, uh, that, and, and the security guards that are there for the events, they have to have security. They go around and measure that, and if it gets above where it's supposed to be, then he tells them to quieten down. So we do, they have stepped that up a little bit. I don't know, Tommy, if you had anything, or Tom, Mr. Ramey has anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, when I was, uh, on the board down there, we, uh, we had a, a board, assembled a board, and we got together and we modeled a sound ordinance for that facility as a board, and it was stricter than the City of Asheville's. It was, it was stricter than the City of Asheville's ordinance, and, uh, we did buy a decibel meter, and when there were music events, you know, I think this thing really, it really started up when COVID hit, and the governor allowed outdoor concerts and things. He, they wouldn't allow people to gather inside because of that, and that, that kinda exacerbated the number of events that we had. But we did, we did get a community group together, the homeowner association presidency represented those folks, and it was very productive. And so I think that's what Chairman Ensley's referring to. Uh, he's, he's now on that board now, so they're, they're supposed to, uh, do a sound check before concerts and make sure that that, that level is down to what the homeowners and that group decided was a good, good level.
What is the level?
I, I can't remember.
Yeah, I can't either. I wish I could. I'll try to, I probably got your email. I'll, I'll find out what that is and, and get that to you. Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else, does anybody have any constituent concerns? I'll just let you just throw it out if you do. Okay. Okay. Okay, there are no administrative agency reports or presentations. I don't have an adjustment or discussion of the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the eight items on the consent agenda? They're pretty standard, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda as it's presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda. We have a request of approval of order collections for tax collections, and our tax collector, Sebastian Cuthbert, is here tonight. Welcome, Sebastian.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is the time of year when I request approval of the order collections. This allows me to collect current year taxes and eventually do enforced collection, once, when that time comes. Um, that's about all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
And when will the tax bills go out? Do you have a date yet?
I don't have a specific date, but we're looking around the first of September, like last year.
Okay, very good. And do you think, on, have we pretty much got corrected the Hurricane Helene, uh, that might be a question for Brian, or, you know, like Hurricane Helene, whenever it destroyed somebody's property, we adjusted that thing?
No, but what I've seen, there's been a lot of adjustments. That's more of a Judy question, though, because she has to raise ass.
Okay, all right. We might have her up here in a minute, then. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sebastian? Okay, this is pretty normal. I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Sebastian. Appreciate you being here tonight. Item number two is to request approval of resolution approving a lease of county property to Mountain Projects Incorporated and authorize and execute a document by County Manager and County Attorney Frank Queen.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the Mountain Projects has a use for the site that, for, for county purposes, was the former site of the Wellness Clinic. Uh, and for us old timers, it was, uh, in the back of the, what used to be the Health Department on Old Asheville Highway. And they, uh, the Wellness Clinic moved across the parking lot and was rehabbed and, and improved there, and then this space became available. Mountain Projects, which is, of course, a, a community action agency here in the, in the county, has been for almost forty years now, is, um, has a use for it, and, and so with the approval of the commissioners, we're authorized by state law to rent it to them for a nominal sum, in this case, a dollar, and then they can use it for their, for their nonprofit purposes. Um, the, the document is organized as a five-year lease with a five-year extension, but that's kind of misleading, because with the approval of Mountain Projects, we've put a sort of a get-out clause in it, that if the county has a, a need for the site, then on a hundred and twenty days' notice, we can regain control of it. In the same way, if Mountain Projects no longer has a need for the site, they can give it back to us with a sixty days' notice. So it's a, it's a, it's certainly a lease in technical terms, but it is in practical terms. It's more like a, um, it's just a use agreement that allows them to, um, to take over and use it for their purposes. And of course, we advertise this, um, as required by state law, uh, to, that we would, we were going to be leasing county property to a, to a nonprofit agency. Any questions?
They do a great service for the county.
They do. One of the, one of the purposes comes from the, it's in your, uh, it's in your resolution, lessens the burdens of government, is, is one of the things that Mountain Projects does. They lessen the burdens of government, because they undertake assistance for some of the poorest people in our community.
Exactly. Okay, can, all right, is there, can we have a motion to approve item two, then?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, does anybody have anything? Any, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to post? Okay, that's unanimous.
Just, just one follow-up question. Frankie said, for us old timers, would you kinda wanna quantify that number, or is, what, do you consider an old timer?
When, when my, when my brothers and, and me and my sister were taken by my mother to the, to the Health Department to be inoculated, uh, she took all of her children, she had six of them, and she vaccinated us all about like vaccinating cattle. She just took them all at the same time. Some of them were too old for the shots, some were at the right age for the shots, some were too young for the shots. But the shots that we got were in the building that's right in front of, of, of this building. And my brother, to this day, has a smallpox vaccination scar on the inside of his arm, because he was being held up by that arm by a public health nurse of the Haywood County Health Department, and she vaccinated him, uh, for smallpox on the inside of his arm instead of on the outside. And he's a, he's been pretty ill about that pretty much ever since.
Frank, I'm certainly glad I asked the question. That, that clears a lot of things up.
It is, it is a wonderful building with different people having an attitude about that.
Okay, well, that was a good segue. Speaking of cattle, uh, we've got a request to approve a resolution supporting the Abama portion of SR fifteen eighty-four, which is Livestock Market Road. And I'll just say, I remember when that market was down there, when I was a kid, and all those old timers there. And, uh, and I can re, I just got, when I read, was reading this, I just had this picture in my mind back in the day. So I kinda miss that place. It was old then, so. But anyway, it's gone now, and this is a, this is a, go ahead, Frank, I'm sorry.
Well, this is a, this is a, we haven't done one of these before, but this is a, this actually originated with North Carolina Department of Transportation. Uh, they've got a section of that road that goes off of, uh, I call it Champion Drive, but it's not actually called Champion. Is it still called Champion Drive?
Yeah.
Okay, you go off of Champion Drive, just past the McDonald's there, and, and go back into this site. A developer has bought up all the property at the end of the state road, and they want to, uh, close a portion of that state road, and then they're gonna reorganize the, the roadway interior to the site. It'll end up being Towne Can, uh, uh, public roads after, after they get done with it. But in any case, they're required to give a public notice. They're, they ask the county commissioners, this is a very peculiar proceeding, it starts with the DOT, but before they close a public road in your county, they ask the, the commissioners to advise them about that. The, the commissioners are acting like a, uh, a public voice for the closing of the road. And what we're doing is, we're signifying that no one will lose access from a public road as a result of the closing of it. And the reason they, they won't lose any access is because these fellows have bought all of the road, of the property that's at the end of the road. So they just shorten the road up. Instead of being one point something miles long, it'll be like four tenths of a mile long or something.
Are there any residences out that direction that's gonna be affected? It's
No.
Right after you passed McDonald's off Champion Drive.
Exactly.
That's where that development starts. There's, there's, there's no impact on any residents?
No, they, they own everything, they own everything past where the DOT is gonna bring its end of the road to. They own everything past that, and they have, they have joined her by all of those property owners in the petition to close the road.
So in your, your estimation, there's no reason for us to deny this request?
Oh, absolutely none. The, the, uh, the, the, there's two businesses there. There's a back entrance to, and this actually, if you look at the aerial photograph that's on your, uh, presentation, there's a, um, there's a, a, a two-lane turnoff on either side, and the DOT maintenance is gonna stop right there. So the businesses will go in and out on a, on a DOT road, and then just past the, the back entrances to those businesses, that's when it becomes a private.
There, from the diagram or the photo, it looks like there are some, maybe, maybe three or four houses there? Will that be part of the private road, and will they, the, the private entity, the subdivision, maintain it for those individuals?
Yes, they bought the, they bought all of those.
They own all of them.
They own all of them.
They own all of them, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They own everything past the intersection there.
Actually, they have one track that goes all the way to North Canton Road.
Yes.
Yes.
They could actually...
I knew about that track, but I just didn't know about these four small ones.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they own all of that.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Is there a motion? Will you approve item three of the regular agenda?
I'm making motion to approve item three.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
This is a follow-up, uh, Mr. Chairman. You're talking about the old livestock market. There's a lot of history right there. Anybody in Haywood County that's ever had cattle, the Robson family run that livestock market, and I got took down there, like Frank got herded through the cattle chute to get vaccinations. One of the funniest things I ever seen in my life, and I, I brought, it brought back memories when you brought that up. They used to have a fall state graded steer sales down there, and all the farmers would bring their prized steers down there, and they had State Department Agriculture out of Raleigh down there grading your steers, and then they had trailer lot loads that sold that night. And, uh, back in the day, nobody had a stock trailer. Everybody had a, a rail truck, and the cattle was this high off of the ground.
Yep.
And you were taking a big chance if you walked down that line. They would line up all the way out to Champion Drive. It would take sometimes six hours to unload. And a lot of people get out of their truck and tell stories and pass the time. I was sitting there one day, and this is a true story. There's a guy, bib overalls, went walking back through there, and they was a, I guess a steer had a, had to pass some of that green grass he'd been eating. He had his back turned, and the fellow was trying to warn him at what was coming out the cracks of that truck, and he turned, and it went right down the bib of his overalls. And he, he just backed up and undone the galuses on his overalls, and he threw the bib down and dumped that load out right on the ground, scraped it off of the back of his hand, put it right back up. And I, if I remember right, he was smoking a pipe. He just put that pipe, he had that pipe in his, in his mouth the whole time. But you don't forget stuff like that when you're a kid. And I know there's a lot of people in the county that's got a lot of memories from that old stockyard. That was a mainstay for the cattle industry in Haywood County. And the Robson family, and certainly they've done well. The grandson is a, I reckon, CEO of Champion Credit Union now. So I remember when he was growing up over there as a kid, a lot of good memories from that piece of property, and I'm sure there'll probably be a lot of good memories, maybe from here on out, on the same piece of property.
Thank you, Tommy. Appreciate that.
Man, Frank's gonna have to quit carrying the business of the, the meeting here tonight. You're gonna, you other guys are gonna have to chime in.
They ain't gonna have to speak up if they're gonna have to keep this meeting going.
I could tell a couple of stories, but I'm not going to.
Okay.
I'm not going to.
Well, it's gonna have to be a good one to top, top those two.
I can top it.
We're not trying to speak, so we can speak this meeting.
Okay, number four. Request approval to award proposal based on the request for proposals to Ins, to Insight Consulting Group LLC for a comprehensive, comprehensive support of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program project applications with FEMA on behalf of Haywood County. Request to, request approval to negotiate contract with Insight Consulting Group LLC and approval for County Manager to sign any necessary documents. Our recovery and resilience, see Officer Cody Grasties here.
Hey, Cody. Saw you come in.
Thank you. Uh, in front of you, or part of your agenda packet, we included an RFP from Insight Consulting. We engaged with the state several months ago about what can we do to help them move along mitigation applications, so it doesn't take as long for applicants as it did maybe during Fred. Um, they've had a record number of applications come in, uh, somewhere in the order of a thousand plus across the western North Carolina, and then with some administrative rule changes with FEMA, uh, as far as how calculations are done and everything, that set them back midstream. So one of the options that came up during some conversations was that Haywood County could acquire our own contractor to put together the project application, that's the bundle of homeowner applications together, and submit, and have that contractor develop comprehensive completed applications that the state could turn around and submit, instead of the state developing those project applications on our behalf. Um, so we, uh, we looked at options for that and found that it is a viable option. Uh, the state kinda gave us a path forward. Um, there's a, a cost to it, and, and that cost can be reclaimed either through, um, what they call pre-award costs, which is that that project application is developed. Um, we would pay out of, uh, county dollars for that, and then FEMA would reimburse us once the project is, um, approved by FEMA, or we can do what's called advanced assistance, which is that it's like a grant that we can pay this contractor to do the work for us in developing these applications, and there's no dollars out of our own pocket other than the thirty-day turnaround to get the dollars back in once approved. And then looking in that, we solicited proposals, and, uh, we had three contractors come back after scoring, after using our standardized scoring sheet. Uh, Insight Consulting ranked the highest, and so we're looking at opting to use them if you approve. To note, um, Insight is the one who, this is a consulting company who's handling Tropical Storm Fred for us, and we've heard really good things from the public for, about them, and, uh, the engagement and the conversations they've had, as well as the support that the locals have gotten, or our, our citizens have gotten. So we think this is the right contractor to select for this. Even today, um, with, um, the one year coming up and everything like that, after conversations with the state, the state and us both still think that the right path forward is us selecting our own contractor to help move this forward and shave off several months in the process that just could not be available if we use the state for the, the application. So with that, we, um, asked for approval on this, uh, RFP, and that the County Manager, once we negotiate the final con, uh, agreement between us, uh, we would be able to enter into agreement with them.
Got any questions?
Cody, do you know if there's any other counties, uh, in the state using this same process?
If, if there are, I'm not aware of them. We'd be one, I'm, I'm fairly certain we'd be one of the first. Um, it is an option that's available to counties, so we're not, we're not recreating anything. It's just not something that's widely used, but with the number of applications coming into the state, it's unsurprising that they would allow us to do it.
Is this something new that they've come up with, or is this something that's been there for a while, and, and we're just now gonna take advantage of that?
I, I think it's been there the entire time, and we're taking advantage of it. Um, to be frank, I, we, we didn't know it was a viable option until we started asking, like, what can we do to shave off time? How can we move this forward? And this was the option that was presented. Um, so...
Do you have any idea how much time it'll shave off? I mean, I know I'm probably putting you on the spot, but just a estimate, I mean, you know?
Today, it would shave off, um, it would shave off four months. Today, it would shave off, it would shave off four months, roughly, give or take. Based upon what we know, it's somewhere between two and four months, four months being the maximum. What we do know is that if the state applies for an extension, the drop dead deadline for submission to FEMA is December 27th, and if the state applies for an extension, that will go to August 27th. And that means that we can, we can do some things to get more applications across the finish line. All applications will be submitted to FEMA that are viable according to FEMA's rules, but this allows us to shorten that process even so much because instead of having a bunch of RFIs, which is FEMA's way of sending questions back to us, and then we answer them back and forth, that allows the contractor more time to compress that and get those applications in, those project applications in, in time. So we think that that will happen, and if that does, that would shave off six to eight months off the applications before approval.
Cody, how many folks took advantage of this mitigation program? You know, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but-
No, you're fine. We had over 80 applicants for acquisition alone. We had 15 for landslide that we have processed so far, but there's probably about 10 more that have recently come in at the deadline that we're finalizing the conversations with them. And then we had, off the top of my head, five or seven for elevation. The number 115, when I added it up, was about for the totality of mitigation applications.
So some of these folks have probably been flooded four times in 20 years. That, I mean, some of them probably have.
I've had conversations with, I've had, I sit down with every applicant. I want to meet them face to face and discuss the, what's going on with them. I've had that conversation with a dozen or so that, you know, this was the home in Clyde that they loved, or the home in wherever they're at in this county, and what they say to me is they don't, they don't want to sell their home. What they want is that no one else will go through this.
Right.
So.
So this is the program that if you enter involuntarily, these folks still, right up until the last day, they can opt out. Is that correct?
That's correct. We had, for Tropical Storm Fred, we recently had someone who had gotten their offer. They were ready for closing, and they opted out. Their retirement plans had changed. It was no fault of the program, but the retirement plans had changed, and they were due to go to the closing table in two days. So that proves the point that everything about this program is optional. Anyone can opt out at any time up into the moment of sale.
Yeah, it's a great program. There's some people that I know contemplated it, but it's kind of a no-risk thing. I mean, things can change. I mean, literally, there could be another flood between the time they signed up for it and when this thing is consummated. So play the long game, leave your options open. Those folks were, you know, they still can opt out, but it's just a, it's a good program. But this particular RFP you're talking about, this group here, it's going to, you've carried the, you've carried the ball all along. I appreciate, I know how much hard work you put into this, so this is going to help you and your group complete the paperwork, expedite this program right on across the finish line, right?
More importantly, it's going to help the citizen. There's one of me and Nicole, who, and there's two people in recovery and resiliency. They're bringing, based upon what we presented to them in terms of just the numbers I've given you, they're bringing nine to 11 contractors to the table to get this across the finish line. So they're adding so much more bandwidth than what we could ever do. In fact, Insight's chief executive officer is the previous state hazard litigation official. So the amount of knowledge and expertise that he brings to the table, especially in this changing environment, is incredible. And I think the county manager wanted to say something, I apologize.
When Cody was talking about shaving time off of the application process, keep in mind, today, I signed the office, offered to purchase for a Hidden Valley Circle property that was in Fred mitigation, 48 months after the event. So if we can shorten it anything, it helps, but it's, this is not, you know, a magic bullet. It's still going to, all of these funds originate with HUD, and it's going to take a long time. So while we're, we're trying to move as quickly as we can and get our applications ahead of those other 1,200 that are there with the state, it's just going to be a slow process, you know? If we can get it in 36 months instead of 48, that will be shaving a year off of it, but that's still three years, right? So.
I did see the resume and the, on this RFP from this group, and I noticed, I noticed some familiar names, and actually, you know, those counties down on the East Coast that have debt with us a lot more than we have, there is a lot of experience on the table with that group. I did, I did see that.
If, if we had a more viable way to shave off time, that, I know that we would explore it and we would use it, but the reality is this, that if we can shave off these months, that's quicker to ending, or finding closure for Helene, right? The other thing that I want to let people know, and in case anyone wonders, is, well, what's the cost to the taxpayer in Haywood County? Well, the reality is that probably close to 90 or 95% of the cost of bringing this contractor in is going to be reimbursed by federal, by federal partners and federal dollars. We've instructed them that if there's anything that they do that's outside of the reimbursement parameters of HMGP, they'd have to get pre-authorization. Insight has agreed to that, so we would know upfront if there's going to be a cost to taxpayer dollars that would not be reimbursed. So for minimal investment, increasing our staff by nine or 11 with trusted partners that worked well with our friends and neighbors in Fred, this, this is a logical path forward to help our citizens.
Well, you answered my next question without me having to ask it, so thank you for that.
I'm sorry about that, sir.
No, you done good. That's, that's what I was going to ask you.
Cody, did you say that they were helping with Tropical Storm Fred as well?
Yeah, that's correct. They're, they're doing the closing for it, that, so all of the appraisals, the survey work, the closing, working with Bryant and working with the citizen, they're the, they've been doing direct connections with citizens, so yes, they've been the one who's helping us with Fred.
I assume we're happy with what we're seeing so far, so.
Every citizen I've talked to, which is, you know, about three-quarters of Fred consistently, told me that they love what Insight's doing, they love the communication, they've had nothing but positive feedback.
I want to say thanks for something you said earlier about meeting with everybody individually. And this, these, some of our residents have just had, they've been hit twice, and, you know, four times, as you said, in 20 years, and to have an individual that they can sit down across a desk from makes a huge difference in something as monumental and life-changing as this is. And the folks that I have talked to that have met with you and that are in the process at whatever level are pleased with the way, as something as horrible as that can be going. So I appreciate that. We're, we're a society, in my opinion, that has lost customer service, and so I appreciate what you're doing. That's important to those folks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate, Cody, and, you know, I can call you up and get answers, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Because this is a hard thing to navigate. It really is. There's a lot of rules and-
It is. There's no easy answers for any of this.
HUD is extremely complex, regardless of the program, it is, whatever it is, it is an extremely complex entity to deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we have some of the best friends and neighbors in Haywood County you could possibly imagine, because an email, I'm going to share this story, I'm sorry I'm taking up time, but had a lady, individual email me earlier today, and she's like, just checking on the status, you know, we're kind of in this situation, and I, and I said, there's, you know, here's the status, we don't have much to share, anything like that, and she's like, you know what? You give me a little bit of hope, and we're moving forward. And you know, anywhere else in the world, that's not what would happen. And, and I don't, I don't want to give, the purpose of this proposal is I don't want to give hope, I want to give action to the citizen that we are doing something and we're not waiting, and they deserve that. So that's, that's the purpose of bringing this forward to you today.
All right, so can we have a motion to approve?
I can motion to approve.
Item four.
Item four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Cody. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Cody.
Yeah, item number five is to request approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of the property at 427 Hidden Valley Circle, Canton, North Carolina, in the amount of $118,000. Our deputy county manager, Chris Boyd, is here today. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm requesting approval of the resolution to allow Haywood County to purchase this piece of property. We have secured some grant funds to purchase this in the amount of 118,000. We would like to have this parcel in this general location for other flood activities in the future, such as locating a, some type of temporary or mobile siren. We feel like it's a good location for the area, and it has its several amenities already there, but the current owner has torn the house down already, so there's no demolition to occur on the property. So it's just a little less than a half acre, outside of the floodway, but within the floodplain, just adjacent to the river. Requesting approval to purchase the property.
Do we have a well and septic on it?
It does have a well and septic on it. Yes, sir.
That's already there?
It is.
In case we want to hook it up, if you will.
If there was some need to hook to it, we certainly can.
I think our county planner had, had looked at this and identified it as a good parcel to do what you're talking about, so that's kind of how it came about, I believe, and then the owner contacted us, I believe, or?
The owner was in talking about some options of building, or attempting to build back, and I think had began some of that between Fred and Helene, just enough to get some piers in the ground to realize that Helene destroyed those, and was, was talking about the best option was to sale, was not looking to make a large profit just to get the initial investment back, so he offered to us for sale.
If you've got any questions on that? Okay. Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item five of the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. They woke up. Okay, under appointments, is to request appointment, the first one is request of reappointment of Haywood County Taxical Assessor Judy Hickman to an additional four-year term.
Mr. Chairman, this is a little bit of a housekeeping item. We're required to appoint tax assessor for a term. Judy's ended, I think, in July, so we missed that meeting, but she's here and can take the oath of office. The general statutes require you to appoint an assessor every, at least every two years, no more than every four years. Judy's been on the four-year term, so this is what we've had in the past. If, 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 if okay with you, after you approve it, Sherry will come up and administer the oath of office, I think, tonight.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that?
Does Judy want to do this job another four years?
Probably depends what day you ask.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to do that now?
Okay. Okay. I, Judy Hickman, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution laws of the United States and the Constitution laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as tax assessor of Haywood County, and that I will not allow my actions as tax assessor to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God. I will. Okay. You want to sign it? Then I'll do my part and finish. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. I'll get there. I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, the next appointment will be request approval of appointment of Ryan Newell to his second term on the Recreation Advisory Board. Do you want to say anything to that, Brandon?
No, I just, Ryan, Ryan is an asset to the Recreation Board, and I've got to know Ryan pretty well over the last several years, and I support the motion here. I'll actually wait on the motion if that's the time that you want.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Bryant, did you need to add anything?
I have nothing to add other than the Parks and Rec Board met on June 3rd and, and recommended Mr. Newell's reappointment.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and the third is to request approval of the following appointment and reappointments to the Greenway Advisory Council. The appointment of Noah Taylor to his first term on the Greenway Advisory Council to represent the town of Maggie Valley. The appointment of Alex Mumbie to his first term on the Greenway Advisory Council to represent the town of Waynesville. The reappointment of Kathy O'Davie to her second term on the Greenway Advisory Council to represent the High Keene community. And reappointment of Melissa Marshall to her second term on the Greenway Advisory Council to represent Lake Geneska Assembly. So can I have a motion to approve all those?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we don't have a closed session. Does anybody have anything else to bring before the board tonight? Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe.